Good evening and welcome to WCAT's special election for the Town Council debate. There's an opening on the Town Council after Ed Dombrowski, former Town Councilor, was elected to the treasurer's position. With me here tonight to question these candidates is a member of FinCom Committee, Brian Cusack, and with me is Ina Kovany. Did I pronounce that right?
You got it.
She's been making me practice.
He needed it.
Yeah, he needed it. Before we introduce the candidates, let me give you the rules. They're pretty simple in this one. Two-minute openings, two-minute closings, and we will then, each candidate will have two minutes for each question. Okay? Pretty simple, all right? If I sort of cut off the candidate, it has nothing to do with their answer, it has nothing to do with their candidacy, it has to do simply with timing. Okay? So we might as well kick things off. Brian, first question to Brian Fox.
Mr. Fox.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know it was the candidates. Our candidates are Brian Fox, Sam Hockenberry, got that right, and Gerard Lehman. Okay? Sorry. All right, first question to, yeah.
I can just leave the questions if you want.
No, I think you guys should do your openings.
Yeah, you could do that, that's true too. Wow. Two mistakes in the opening. All right, here we go. Brian Fox.
I'll do my opening now. Good evening, my name is Brian Fox, I'm running for a seat on the Wakefield Town Council. I'd like to start by thanking Bill for moderating tonight, Brian and Ina for hosting, and a very special thanks to WCAT. I'm on their board, I know how hard they're working, they have a very busy schedule this time of year, and yet here we are in the studio tonight. And also thanks to Sam and Gerard for running great campaigns so far. I think all three of us have the best interest in mind for the town of Wakefield. A lot of you know me for running the Fourth of July Parade, being an abbot of several Facebook groups in town, Movies by the Lake, raising money for businesses during COVID, or my years at the Boy Scouts in town. I've been often referred to as the Mayor of Wakefield for these efforts. My wife will ask what meetings I have lined up each week, and this week I have three nights scheduled doing something that benefits our town, including this. I've dedicated a lot of time volunteering already, and it's not something I see ending anytime soon. I grew up in town, I have a vested interest in preserving Wakefield's character while also moving towards the future. There's so much good here already. We have great events, fantastic restaurants, one of the best farmers markets in the region, a welcoming library, and some of the best schools in the area. While several surrounding communities are facing overrides and financial difficulties, we have maintained a high bond rating that gets us better rates when we borrow for projects. So as part of my campaign, I've visited hundreds of houses around town so far, and asked people online what our biggest issues are, in person and online. And these are a few of the things that keep coming up. One is people don't feel that town officials are responsive when they call or email, and they don't feel like they're being listened to when they're commenting online or in letters in the item. People frequently reached out for me over the years, asking for help with these issues. I connect them with the people I can and do my best to be a sounding board. I don't have all the answers, and you may not always agree with me, but I will respond in a timely manner. Second, I think everyone in town has seen how our roads are and have been for a little while. I go to town meetings, we've approved extra money for repairs in the past, and we have a strategic road plan, but there still have some issues on several of the roads around town. It's the biggest complaint we have, and I'm just not sure what's being done about it right now. And of course, traffic and the overbuilding going hand in hand. People are concerned about the traffic problems, it's very difficult to get anywhere in town. Some say it's because of the apps directing you off 128, but if you're on North Ave on a non-farmers market Saturday or in the afternoon, it's not an app-related issue, it's just traffic in town. We have several large traffic projects that are in process and on the horizon. The ZBA is struggling many of them with the 40Bs and the 40As that will be coming up as part of the T-zoning. It would be great if more people were riding the T to work every day, like they used to pre-COVID, but now many are working from home and have their own cars, and we need something that will get us through that. In my paid career, I've been known as a fixer who works to solve problems, and I have and will collaborate with anyone at any level. I can be swayed by compelling arguments and will change my mind willingly. I'll never be a yes-man, I'm not afraid to be the lone dissenting vote at Town Council meetings, and I would like your vote to help you work with me to make our town better. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sam Hockenberry, and I'm running to be your next Town Councilor. I grew up, the oldest of four kids, all of whom my parents instilled a sense of community service in. We volunteered at our church, we were active in scouts, boosters, and other organizations. When we vote, we text each other the number of the ballot we are at the machine. I studied economics and political science at UMass Amherst, and to the surprise of no one, when I moved back home, I joined the Finance Committee. My goal was to keep the resume fresh and to learn something new. However, I got bit by the local gov bug. I served three years on my hometown's FinCom, the last two as its chair. I also served as a vice chair of a Town Administrator Screening Committee. This experience has equipped me with the knowledge and the skills to serve our town, my new adopted home, effectively. I had returned to UMass to pursue a master's in public policy and administration because of the work I did on the Finance Committee. It showed me that this is what I wanted to do, this was my calling. I now work for the town of Burlington as a Swiss Army knife of the administration, that's what my boss calls me. However, I wasn't content with just doing that as my full-time job. I moved to Wakefield, I registered to vote, and I joined capital planning. I've also served on the Housing Production Plan Advisory Committee, and now I'm here to say that I can do more. I am eager to discuss the challenges we face as a town and share my approach in addressing them. Together, we can overcome these challenges and build a better future for our town. I hope by the end of the night, I will have earned your consideration, if not your vote. Thank you.
Thank you to WCAT for organizing this, Bill, Brian, Ina for participating, as well as my opponents. My name is Gerard Lehman, I am running for the Town Council seat on June 24th. I'm running to provide the common sense solutions and extraordinary commitment that the town's going to need through the council to address our many challenges and maximize the many opportunities that we face. I owe much to the community that welcomed my wife and I back in 2007. It's proven to be the perfect place to raise our two daughters, and though I have detailed insights and opinions on many of the issues facing the town, what I hope voters, all of you watching, will understand, that I am committed to be a Town Councilor that is a voice for the neighborhood from the neighborhood, and you will feel genuinely empowered and connected to your town government throughout my term of service. Just as in my day job, that takes outreach, mutual respect, and speaking in common terms that everyone can understand. I've learned a lot from being at the table for many of the town's biggest recent debates. I've learned even more, however, about how town government impacts the daily lives in neighborhoods of our residents and visitors from my time speaking with the many volunteers, parents, students, visitors, elected officials, and the town's professional staff. Whether it's at an official Finance Committee meeting, a deep debate that we always once had there, or quick conversations on the sidelines of our kids' sporting events, I want those of you watching and those of you voting to know that your opinions have influenced my opinions, and I'm going to take your insight to the council as well. During my 10 years on the Finance Committee, I served as chairman during very important spending and investment decisions, and developed a track record for taking the tough votes and making sure those votes were very well-informed and were very well-communicated to my colleagues. We didn't always disagree, but I think my colleagues knew where I stood. That's going to be an important dynamic to breed collaboration on the council as we go into the next era. I left the Finance Committee to support my wife's elected service on the school committee, I left the Finance Committee to support my wife's elected service on the School Committee, an experience that proved to both of us to be eye-opening to really understand how the decisions made at WPS impact students in the town more broadly. I practiced as a forensic accounting and compliance officer 26 years. I'll bring those technical skills and communications abilities to you. I look forward to taking your questions tonight during the balance of the campaign and during my term of service, hopefully. Thank you very much.
All right, and now the questions, which I was very excited for, because in addition to questions that each of the questioners have, we've got input from the community, and that's what I was, that's why I thought we'd just skip the openings, but we had to have them. So we do have some great questions tonight, and we do have a lot of input from the community, and if we don't get to all these questions, we're going to allow the candidates the opportunity to post them on their Instagram accounts or some social media thing. Brian, to Brian Fox.
Mr. Fox.
I'd like you to talk a little bit about how your educational and professional background help you, would help you in this role, and if you could talk a little bit about what motivated you to run for public office, it's not an easy thing to do.
Sure, so I graduated from the University of Massachusetts Dartmouth in 2006 with a degree in political science. I studied public administration, I interned at the State House with Representative Mark Falzone. In my non-political life, I work at HP Hood in Commerce, Data, and Digital Shelf. Before that, I worked in finance at the Bank of New York Mellon for over seven years. I have a lot of financial experience working at the bank. One of my biggest projects I ever dealt with was finding millions of dollars in sales that were accidentally put into the wrong accounts. Spent a lot of time doing that, a very intensive project. As far as running for office now, it's something I'd always considered. I mean, I majored in political science, I studied campaigns when I was in college. The opportunity to run for this term now, it's ironic, it's the first contested Town Council race we've had in a while now, there's three of us running for one seat, whereas our race in April just had two candidates for, sorry, three candidates for three spots. So I just feel like it was now was the time to do it. I think about it every chance I gotten and decide this is the time. I love the town, I believe in it, I think we need a common sense approach to Town Council, and I'm hoping I can be that choice. Thank you.
Sam.
So as I alluded to in my opening, my experience in my professional career, working for a municipality, being a Finance Committee Chair, is why at the age of 30, I thought I should jump in on this. This is what I do, this is my vocation, this is my day in, my day out. And that, and I care about it. I want to solve these things. When I was on FinCom in my hometown of Hope Dale, small community, there's no finance team, no support, so I was being a de facto finance director, and that was a lot of work for a part-time job that I cut the stipends for, because we needed to balance budgets. And I thought, this is tough, but I would love to do this full-time, like if I could really commit to this. And that's why I went back for a master's and why I got into doing this as a profession. And so, running for this seat now felt like an opportunity that I could jump on. I thought about running in January, but I made the mistake of waiting for somebody to ask me. And I sat there, and then I saw that candidates were running, and they seemed very qualified, and it felt like it would be a vanity project to just go and challenge them. But when this opened up, I watched the Town Council meeting, saw they set the date, said ballots, the nomination papers would be ready the next morning, and I showed up. I wanted to jump on it, I didn't want to sit and wait and hope that somebody would be like, oh, Sam, you're a nice, bright guy, maybe you're interested. So that's why I'm running now, and again, this is what I do.
Thank you, Brian. So I studied accountancy, pursued a CPA designation in my earliest career, graduating from Bentley with an accountancy degree, but also a secondary course of study, not a full minor, but in what we called international cultures and economies. That helped me, the technical accounting skill and the financial modeling obviously speaks for itself in how it's contributed to my Finance Committee service and my view on the town budget generally. So I have great facility with the budgeting process and financing, but that international cultures and economies course really taught you that people around the world think differently, just like different people that comprise our community think and value things differently. So I bring a certain sensitivity that is very necessary in the business world, though we are not often given credit for it, to the council because it's in practice all the time. In addition to sort of a life in commercial practice, I've always had a passion for public policy. I didn't study, these gentlemen have, for a government career, but rather just as an act of civic duty commitment, always wanted to understand federal state in local politics and governmental decision-making. So it's always been sort of a passion in me, my father and mother instilled that at a young age, just participatory. So got involved in my first campaign when I was nine years old, hanging door knockers for the Town Clerks Race in Stonem, Whip Saltmarsh and Paul Casey, going back sometimes, some of you older folks around town might remember those names. So I bring sort of a full spectrum of skills, and also as a fairly senior executive in business, I've been through great recessions, smaller recessions, layoffs. I know what people, especially parents facing economic turmoil and uncertainty, how they feel about rising taxes, rising burdens, and things like that. So I bring sort of a 360-degree sensitivity to the Town Council.
Next question, Ina, your question is to Sam.
Sam, I want you to tell us the top three issues that the community is facing and how your goals align to solve those problems.
The number one thing that I, and another reason why I wanted to jump in this race in particular, was Steve Mayo is retiring, and we need to replace the guy who manages the town day-to-day. Technically, like, I think it's 37 and a half hours a week, but it's 50, 60, it's night meetings, it's a lot of work, and Steve did a fantastic job for 17 years. So that next person could outlast us. You know, this seat is open again in April, we could be gone very quickly. We want the administrator to be there, to be that steady hand. And so that's an important job, and it's a job that I've helped hire for before in the past, and it's a job that I work directly with in my profession. The next thing, I've watched Dan Sherman's presentations at every town meeting about how much our budget is growing versus what we're expecting revenues to look like, and when I joined the FinCom in Hope Dale, it was override discussions, we were already there. So I know how painful that is, I know how difficult the debate of the position of a fireman versus how much more people on a fixed income have to pay in their taxes to support that, and it's divisive, and it's hard, and I want to avoid that. And so, I want to move toward reevaluating our finances, we'll have a new administrator, it's fresh eyes, it's a chance to change some things, and I'd like us to move toward, and I'm sorry for the technical, a GFO, a award-winning budget, so that's presenting information. And then finally, I guess I'll just throw in roads, because I've got 10 seconds here, and we should talk about putting together a program for paving those.
Gerard.
When I heard the growing concern or probability that we were going to have to dip into funds like OPEB, start doing road bonds, those are discussions I was involved with 10 years ago, when I was fortunate enough to join the Finance Committee. The town did a fantastic job getting ahead of where other communities were on their other post-employment benefits, pension obligations, which is a national crisis. So we are now there where we've made great strategic decisions, where, again, I had a small part advising town meeting in communicating through the item and other posts. Folks at home can go on the WCAT site and watch former meetings like Samuel was talking about with Dan Sherman, where I sat with Dan, Steve Mayo, and the Superintendent of Schools, trying to break down and make digestible the financial picture and explain excessively, you know, why we're doing what we're doing and what the future holds. The future is now. The experience I had in formulating, whether it was the Galvin approvals at town meeting, I wrote an article in the Daily Item back in that day with a very talented Chairman of the Finance Committee, where we tried to build a larger coalition. My day job as a chief compliance officer, when I'm not even the chief, but somewhere down the line, it's about consensus building, taking very complex regulation, state and federal regulations, and making them digestible to make sure that everyone's aligned with keeping that behavior. That's where we are now on the fiscal responsibility and common sense solutions that are going to allow us to bear fruit from those strategic investments that caused debt. We did that strategically, but now the discipline comes in to make sure we don't go override or otherwise impact too much more the town taxpayer. Those are my goals, it's exactly where we are, and as was noted, part of my job is vetting and overseeing senior executives analogous to a town administrator. So I am perfectly positioned to make an immediate impact on the Town Council for that decision in the immediate term and then for long-term considerations.
Sure, so I think one of the, I'd say most alarming things is the last town meeting when Dan Sherman spoke, as they alluded to, he showed our 10-year projections, and aside from working finance, I'm not really a finance guy when it comes to town stuff, so I rely on the experts on FinCom, and Dan, who as an actuary, always kind of does the doom and gloom of what could go bad, he puts the numbers up there that were alarming, and I don't know what the trick is going to be to make sure that we don't fall off the cliff right now. We have a good amount of free cash, we have the high bond rating, I don't know how much that's going to hold up if his 10-year projections hold true. We did a lot of capital spending this year that almost felt like this is your last time that you're getting it, so put it in now. I don't know if that was the mindset going into it, I know that we got a new fire truck, and I was always told by the fire chief, that's something he always holds off on doing until absolutely needed. As one issue, obviously Steve's departure within this month, he's been here for 17 years, he has over 20 direct reports, that's huge shoes to fill. I know we're going to have a capable assistant filling in for him in the time being, but we are going to need to replace that job. I'm hoping we get someone who has longevity of Steve and a lot of his same qualities, but can also bring fresh ideas. Steve did his job for a long time, was admirable, and now it's time for someone else to step in and do what they can do. I think the third thing goes back to roads. I mean, I drove over here tonight, I don't need new shocks now, but it's getting really bumpy out there in some spots. A lot of people are openly complaining about it. I've been at town meeting where we've discussed giving them extra money, strategic planning for roads, and then I'm not sure what's happening, and not a lot of paving seems to be going on, just a lot of patching right now, something I'm really looking forward to getting into.
Thank you. Brian, your next question.
Gerard. Are there lessons to be learned from other towns around us, and if so, what might those lessons be, and how can we turn those into actions here in Wakefield?
Yeah, so on the roads issue that's come up, I think Melrose has had some particular challenges, if the look-back period is about 15 years, and we've discussed these kinds of things in town. I was Chair of the FinCom when we talked about a road bond, which we're doing now. That's to get up to speed, but the key here is, what's most responsible to your question, Brian, is to maintain commitment for that boring blocking and tackling type line item over time, so we don't fall behind again. This is meant to be a catch-up, so let's not get into arrears once again on lane miles. The other probably glaring example is in Stonem, there's a current situation, but not so long ago, they were talking about or threatening, depending on what the right nomenclature is, removing all sports, and now it's saved the library. Those campaigns that are done in the name of Prop 2 and 1/2 overrides, they're very emotional and they can be divisive, but good stewardship in the before years is really what keeps us out. So let's avoid divisive lawn signs and campaigning pretending that it's about one or two items or issues in town, it's really about broad governance, and that's been my experience both in town government, town volunteerism, and of course, my corporate senior executive roles. Early commitment has to be cultural, like any environmental solution, any town-wide initiative really has to be inlaid culturally, and I think Steve has done a great job in the years leading up to it, I'd like to see that continue, but those two recent examples from the near abroad are really what we should strive to avoid and what I'm committed to doing on Town Council, and it's possible. I hope viewers at home view my remarks as optimistic. My job will be to be paranoid on your behalf and to be diligent on your behalf so we can enjoy town spaces and resources, but let's avoid those two examples, and there aren't many more.
Thank you. So my father-in-law lives in Melrose, and I often read the Melrose paper whenever I'm over there. Melrose has high property values for their houses, but not a lot of business. So one issue that Melrose is having is they have a lot to fund, where's the money going to come from? You can't take it from the business, it has to come from the homeowners. There's talk of reopening schools. Stonem has the opposite problem, they have a tremendous amount of business, and they were also facing a financial crisis. They had schools that ran long, as was mentioned a minute ago, they've talked about closing their library, their senior center, and those aren't issues we're currently facing. I'm hoping that we continue to not have to do, make those kind of decisions. I don't want an override, I don't want to feel that we're under the gun of having an override. We're in good financial streets right now, I'm hoping that stays that way. FinCom does an excellent job trying to tell us where we're at and try to rein in the spending. You know, I know that we could use some more businesses in town so we can avoid some of these same situations they're in, so the residential tax burden doesn't have to be as high as it is right now. Thank you.
Yeah, so learning from other communities. Burlington, for roads and water and sewer mains, we do every other year a bonding program, so that we're doing paving roads one year and then replacing water and sewer mains the next year, because underneath those bumpy roads, we've got pipes that are old, and those are going to need to be replaced, and that also costs money. It's important infrastructure investment that we need to make. Now, the way to avoid the issues that we're talking about, and we'll talk about, and let me use the Stonem example, they face the same budget pressures driving up their budgets, right? It's salary, that's most of it. They have a smaller budget, but it's the same sort of driver, it's health insurance, that's another huge aspect of it. The difference between Wakefield and Stonem is that Wakefield has had more new growth. Those developments that have been happening in town provide the new growth that moves the tax levy up, that gives us that levy capacity to continue to grow our budget and support the services that we want to support. Ideally, we would want to see more commercial development. Commercial businesses provide taxes without requiring the same level of service in return. In order to do that, we need to work with the planning board, about being proactive, about setting up zoning to encourage commercial development to come back. It might not come back right now because of economic headwinds, but when the tailwinds come around, we want to make sure that we've tacked ourselves in position to take advantage of that. So the solution to that revenue problem is to try to help increase our commercial growth. In terms of controlling expenses, health insurance is going to be the biggest driver, whether or not that means we stay in the GIC, we move to MIA, or we look at a self-insurance program, that's what Burlington does, gives us a little bit more flexibility to control our health insurance increases. But there are things we can do, there are places that we can learn from, and that's what I'd like to try to bring to the council, is these ideas and these experiences from other places.
Ina, your next question is to Brian.
Brian, what are the areas of the budget that you would choose to increase, decrease, or keep the same? or keep the same?
That's a really good question. Right now, the schools are about 49% of the budget, but they're also our biggest employer. So I assume that's going to have to go up. Salaries go up, insurance goes up. We have a brand-new high school. It's going to need a lot of new fancy things put in it that are not currently in the building that we're in now. So I assume that is going to have to go up. For staying the same, I would hate to say the DPW budget because we're not getting those things fixed that need to be fixed now. I don't know if it's about a reallocation that we need to do. And as far as decreasing, I can't think of one to decrease. I know we have a lot of police and fire retirements that are coming, so we're hiring younger members to join those departments that aren't paid quite as high. So while we need more police officers to replace the retirees, maybe there's movement that could be made in those departments, but I don't really know. Thank you.
Sam.
In terms of things to increase in the budget, it's hard when we're just talking about general inflationary pressure, whether it's already contracted salaries or just the cost of living, which we all know is going up. You see it at the grocery store. We see it buying paper. So I think it's more about controlling the level of increase, right? Reining that in and making sure it stays within what we have available for revenue. In terms of decreasing, right, it's looking for creative solutions. It's talking about reexamining our health insurance program and whether or not there's a cheaper alternative. But some of those decreases, that's a one-off decrease, and then it's going to increase again. So you have to be creative about layering some of that to make sure that we continue to keep that tax levy limit way out in front of us. You've got to keep pushing it down the road. And as far as keeping the same, I think it's more about keeping level service the same. It's not necessarily about needing to hire a bunch of people or needing to fire a bunch of people. Efficiency is not just on a spreadsheet. It's are people able to do the job they were hired to do? Are they being able to commit to the time that we ask them to do the job and to do it well? So I don't know if there's a line item that I can really specifically point to, but I hope that it's a general sense of financial management and making sure that we find revenue and be creative when we have options to decrease something without harming the services that we provide to our employees, but also to the residents.
Gerard.
Thank you. For areas of increase, capital investment, though we're probably going to have to postpone some of the very much-needed things. We are staring down the barrel of certain obsolescence in town assets, something pumping station within DPW. Some of their facility and equipment needs are going to come to the fore, whether we like it or not. So I'd like to get ahead of that, so that probably qualifies as an increase. I'm hoping public safety areas like fire and police can level fund for a while, enjoying the new public safety building and other accommodations. I think we're just investments, and hopefully we can level fund there. I applaud the Superintendent of Schools for, in this room during the Finance Committee briefing, sort of acknowledging to Dan Sherman that things have been good over at WPS and that the future budget needs are going to take some belt tightening. Whether it's a full decrease, probably not going to get there. They're facing hiring problems. There's not enough good teachers to fill the roles, so that's going to cause pressure. So I don't want people to think I'm ignorant to the practical realities that are going to cause cost inflations within WPS. That's certainly going to happen. But I do applaud the Superintendent for giving a nod to the fact that the getting's been good and that some belt tightening is going to be necessary. The roads are another area. If you count the bond, that's been a recent increase, but we're probably going to have to increase some commitment there so we don't fall behind, as I mentioned earlier. And lastly, the health insurance, Samuel makes a good point. However, at the tri-board meeting back in October, Steve made a very helpful point that we were under budget for health insurance. I was on the Health Insurance Subcommittee on the Finance Committee many years ago, and it wasn't always that way. And we probably can't count on it because of the inflationary pressures that were mentioned. That's a macroeconomic reality. But I'm hoping that at least stabilizes or we can take less of it hit there, so that's probably my lower line item.
Sam. I think we can all agree that Steve Mayo has done a really good job over the last 17 years for the town.
Sorry.
My question is, what do you hope the new town administrator will do differently for the town?
Yeah, great. Briefly, to go back to the other thing, Gerard, my capital planning members are going to kill me that I didn't mention we need to increase capital spending. What do I want to see in a new town administrator?
That might be different from what we have had.
That would be different from... You know, I've met Steve a number of times. We've spoken. He's affable. He's been very kind to me. He does a great job of talking with other administrators. So when I first met him, he was like, oh, yeah, I talked to your boss before. He mentioned you. Like, that quality is remarkable. His ability to do the small P politics of talking with people is something that you want in a leader, right? I don't know what Steve is like as a day-to-day boss, you know, but I want somebody who empowers the people underneath them in order to elevate them professionally, help them seek fulfillment in the job that they're doing. And as far as management stuff, I'd like to just see some changes in just modernizing how we approach what we're doing. That includes helping push for updates to the website, helping improve some of the aesthetic appearances, to help get communication and messaging out there. So working with our Communications Director and helping push what it is that we do for the residents, I think is a key factor as budgets get tighter or as other concerns happen, or zoning changes that we need to make in order to develop the kind of growth that we really want to see that will support the community. So communication's going to be a huge aspect of it, and it's hard in fragmented media today.
Thanks.
Gerard.
There is one flaw with having a Tom Brady as your town administrator, and it's that you can over-rely on him. And I thank Steve, both for his community involvement, the history within town, going back to all his family's service within town, was relied upon heavily to be the voice of the council slash board of selectmen, the town government at large. What I'd like to see the next town administrator allow for and kind of compel, and possibly the council do to reciprocate, is to have more discussion by the council or subsidiary boards to demonstrate the debates that had gone on leading up to final decisions, and that there is oftentimes cross-board, multiple expertises agreeing on our final destination on articles that are presented at town meeting. It's kind of a nuanced thing. Steve was obviously so relied upon, brought great credibility, his ability to speak and communicate to the capital markets, whether it's Bond Council or whatnot, are exemplary. So to find a fault with that example, I'm straining, Brian. But that's the one, I think, to some of the, sometimes it's animus or some of the real energy in town meeting or in the community pages on Facebook or in the forum and the item, is people who feel a little bit dispossessed or a little bit too distant from the ultimate decision-making, and it may be that their elected officials aren't being robust enough in their presentations. I will have no problem with that. So I will be a voice either as loyal opposition when I disagree, but I do want people to know, as is definitely true in my Finance Committee term, that we had robust debates, that all the elements that people often say that they're concerned about at town meeting were adequately addressed during board meetings, council, FinCom, planning, conservation. So those kinds of things, of course, it happens a bit now. I think a little bit more presence and bold voice in public fora by those elected or appointed officials will really help the town administrator in consensus-building real life.
Eno.
I think...
Oh, no, Brian.
Oh, Brian, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I think the hardest part to do a replacement is that he's done it for so long. Everyone knows his father was the Superintendent when I was in school for many years. Steve has a very strong legacy in town as a selectman and then becoming town administrator, and that's really hard to replace. One thing I wondered about is when we find a new town administrator, if it makes sense to find someone from outside of town. Maybe not outside of the general region, but outside of town to have a fresh perspective. I think it's really easy to go back to the selectman pool, as has been done before with our town administrators, but the town administrator in Lynnfield is the former mayor of Melrose. Maybe there's someone out there who could bring a fresh perspective, who's not necessarily living in town now, and maybe won't live in town, but can come in, do their job, and have a little bit of a disconnect. Steve was always at everything, mostly because he lived here. He's very loyal to the town. He was at the football games. He was at the parade. He was at all these other events that go on in a personal capacity, not just as town administrator. So I think someone to have those fresh perspectives might be really good. I've had a lot of meetings with Steve over the years with the parade and other things that come up, and he was always very helpful. He's a funny guy. Town meeting can be a real drag, and sometimes he'd have his quick-witted remarks either at a town council meeting or at a full town meeting, and, you know, he adds some levity to it. So hopefully we can be maybe a little bit funnier than he was.
This question is for Gerard. So the whole town has watched the saga of the North Ave bike lanes. Here's that question. What changes, if any, would you make to the current configuration? Maybe not necessarily to the bike lanes, but we want to make it safer for bikers to be able to get to and from up and down Mass Ave, North Ave, excuse me. What changes would you make, if any, to make that safer?
Interesting slip, because I actually bicycle commute as part of my commute, Mass Ave, over the Longfellow Bridge, around the hospitals. So I have a pretty well-informed opinion about cycle commutation. And you'll see me around town when I'm knocking doors, I'm on my bike. I rode to the festival by the lake on my bike with my daughter. So it's an issue that's top of mind for me. With that said, I don't think bike lanes are as effective as some advocates say that they are. I grew up very near the lake, used to run from Stonem down the hill, around the lake and back, cycling or scootering the same, skateboarding. So I always thought that area was already adequate, and I was not an advocate for them installing the bike lanes as they did. The money was better spent elsewhere. So I think that area should probably remain as it is now, and we not pursue bike lanes in that place. I would much rather we look at places like New Salem Street where new capacity to tough roads would be more pro cyclist. And, you know, this is an issue that is not just for bike lanes per se. It can impact our policies on public health. You know, being more pedestrian or cyclist-friendly will be accretive to our public health goals, which should bring down costs and things like that. Overall, allow us to comply with our Complete Streets policy, which is online, and I recommend people check it out. So as it applies to North Ave, which was your specific question, I'd like to keep it as it is. Allow the parking that supports things like the farmer's market and things like that. I don't find a lot of safety in the rubber barriers in Boston. I'm just as vigilant. Sometimes I think it breeds a sense of security that can be dangerous. So that's how I feel about the North Ave bike lanes, but I would like to explore other areas, and I'm a big fan of the rail-to-trail where there's genuine safety and promotion.
Thank you. Brian.
Thank you for that question. As you know, it's been all over the place. So I live parallel to North Ave. I'm on North Ave all the time. I see a lot of people riding bikes around the lake. They were fine before we put the flex poles up. They'll be fine after we took the flex poles away. I'd say the more dangerous issue now is all the random line markings on North Ave. It's very difficult to tell. So I was on the Fourth of July Parade Committee. We paint the stars every year on North Ave. I went to Joe Conway and said, hey, can we paint the stars this year? He said, yeah, where you normally do them. And now if you look, you can see the lines where they were, where they got put when the flex poles were put, and now where they are now. It was very confusing when the flex poles were up. I want to say the first week they were installed, someone drove down the flex poles as if they were a bike and got stuck. I don't see how that makes it any safer, as Gerard mentioned. He doesn't necessarily feel safe riding within them, and if a car goes the wrong way or hits you trying to avoid a delivery truck, or as referenced by the fire department, fire trucks or police cars going down North Ave, it's very difficult to get around them. I love the wider sidewalk on North Ave. I love walking the lake. Bikes seem to be going fine in that area before. I think they'll be fine again, even without flex poles. Thank you.
Sam.
Great. Yeah, that's the number-one thing I get asked at the door. They go, what did you feel about the bike lane on North Ave? Initially, I didn't mind it. I thought I was kind of excited to go in on the northbound side. That's the way I do my laps around the lake when I'm trying to spare my knees and my feet. But the flex poles, I can see where that was taking up a lot more space. And aesthetically, I also understand where it was like, what is this? I don't like them. I'm confused by it. So I understand people's frustration with it. And that was taken away. It's gone. I'm not running to put it back. We're not trying to undo an undo, right? That's not productive to anybody's time. As far as bike lanes are concerned, I hear what Gerard's saying. There are advocates for it. There are also cycling enthusiasts who don't particularly like them. I think it comes down to, does it make sense where it is? Did it go to talk to traffic safety? Did it talk with our public safety officials? Did the town engineer have any input on how the street layout is working? Does it connect an A to B? That's another complaint with what happened on North Ave. It was from one intersection to another without connecting destinations. And so if we're going to solve the traffic problem, the solution is dilution. If more people are cycling, walking, joining their trips, that's less cars in the road, that's less cars in your way, right? When I drive, pedestrians, cyclists, other drivers drive me crazy. When I'm on a bike, same thing. When I'm walking, same thing, right? It's people in your way. Traffic is a problem, but to spread out how people get around where they're going, that's how we solve the traffic problem.
Thank you.
Brian Fox.
Yes.
I want to dive in a little bit into the development question. New development is double-edged sword, right? We can raise taxes, but it also increases the strain on resources. So should there be more or less development? And I want you to tack on to that if your thoughts on the parking situation in town.
Thank you for that one. I was actually reading the ZBA. Agenda's coming up for recap before tonight. So there's a lot of projects that are kicking off soon and will be coming up. There's talk of one on Salem Street. They just put two beautiful new houses on Salem Street, and there's talk about putting another development off Salem Street. As someone in the millennial generation, my generation is having a hard time finding housing. It is very expensive. People my age are having to leave town. They cannot afford an $800,000 cape in this town, and there's not a lot of single-family options anyway. So I totally get the appeal for building the new apartments and condos so people my age, maybe a little younger, maybe older, can downsize and find somewhere to live. My concern is when we're building really big ones that we're adding people. There's concerns at the elementary schools that they're getting full. I've seen Brad at town meeting a couple times. I don't know if it's true or not. Doug Lyons doesn't seem too worried, but, you know, adding 500 units here or there could add more children to the school district. As far as parking, I expect almost all those people in every new house or condo or apartment unit to have at least one car. It's reality. Very few people are taking the T these days. They're all going to somewhere to park. A few years ago, I attended the meetings that were being held on renovating the downtown district, and there's talk of taking the angle parking away and turning it into parallel parking. And they said, don't worry, you're not really losing spots. You just need to walk further away to come to downtown to go shopping or dining. And a lot of people don't want to do that. So it's definitely something we need to look into as we move towards those other projects, is how many new cars will come with these new buildings being put up.
Thanks, Brian. Sam.
Yeah, so I talked about it. Ideally, we have a lot... Ideally, we have a lot more commercial development than just residential, right? That moves the tax burden back over towards commercial. The more commercial you have, it lowers residential tax burden. As far as housing development and affordability, thank you for bringing it up, Brian. So when I served on the Housing Production Plan Committee, I think the youngest person on the committee, a lot of people on there talking about, we need housing for seniors. And I'm like, buh 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 buh. But as we talked about it and as we worked through the problem and what's going on, you have a lot of seniors who are in single-family homes that they raised their kids in, that they can't afford the upkeep on, they'd like to sell, but that sell was to then be a bulk of their retirement fund or something that they could feel like they could pass down. But if you have to take the entire sell point, all that money you collected to just buy the smaller thing and spend all of it, you didn't make anything with that. And so I understand you feel trapped. You don't have anywhere to go. And so meanwhile, you have three empty bedrooms that a family could be moving into and using all of them, and you want to stay in town. So that's why the plan has a lot more on senior housing, gentle density, cottage courts, ranches, the smaller spaces that allow people who've lived here their whole lives or most of them to stay here, to let their kids be able to buy the house that they're vacating. So it's finding some more solutions to create more space. But again, commercial development is better for the tax base. Residential development, I'd like to see something smaller for our seniors.
Residential versus commercial tax burden is one we've talked about in town since I've been here. So I think that's right. We are, some of our projects, it's the number-one issue I am engaged on. I held a sign near the Nahon Street Pit on Saturday after graduation in the rain to really get a sense from people who are using that area, what the density issues are going to cause when 127 is developed. So we call it a one-man standoff, but also call it an observational study to gather evidence about what really is going to happen with those planned developments. Some of the developments have been fantastic. Our new neighbors are great. I even went to town meeting and advocated for the redevelopment of a lot in my neighborhood that used to be a gas station, which is now two units. It's a fascinating question because it goes to livability issues, too much crowding, too much traffic is one hand, but then also allowing for and maximizing people's property rights are an important consideration, one I'm passionate about. The bigger projects, I think, have been unsightly and unpopular, and the reason that we need as future counselors to be sensitive to that is there's two budgetary impacts to it as well. Steve has mentioned at his pre-town meeting briefing, at town meeting, and during tri board meetings, perhaps the new growth, as we call it, trend is going to level off or decline soon. That's going to mean less permitting application fees in our other receipts section. It's also going to mean less tax levy. Okay, fine, that's the financial, but really it's the livability issues that have already been raised, and many of our constituents have talked about in our daily meetings. So it is a case-by-case basis. What a counselor needs to be sensitive to is appointing people to the CBA, sorry, ZBA, that know how to balance these topics, keep developments that are not too large or too complex out of the neighborhoods where they do belong, so we continue new growth and renovation without crowding out neighborhoods where they don't belong.
Thank you. Looking at the time, so what we're going to do is go ahead and one more question, and it's going to be one-minute answer, okay? And you can count on my signal to keep it to one minute, okay? Ena.
This question is for Sam. So you have all said that we need better roads. Everybody agrees with that. We want to understand that you know and that you are aware, what is the challenge with that? How are you going to overcome the challenge of being in town council and wanting better roads? We still don't have them. Everybody has wanted them forever. So what are you going to be doing differently? What is the challenge, and what is your plan?
So the challenge is that roads are expensive. It's, I mean, that's the nut of it, right? It's a lot to pay for X number of miles of roads, and you want to stay on top of it. And when you fall behind, you have to then spend a lot more to catch up. And Gerard has alluded to this before, did a big spending bill to try to catch up, but it's commitment, right? So to refer back to what I talked about with Burlington, we do a bond every other year to make sure that we have a paving schedule. And I get it. My street was open twice in the three years I've been living here. It's a mess. I drive on a bunch of bumpy roads just to get to the highway, and we're all on the west side, the wrong side of the tracks, so we're not covering a lot to get to the highway, but we experience it, right? So we live it, we know it, but it's about commitment.
So I agree. The issue with roads is not just cost of aggregates and things that we can't control. I've been part of those discussions in the past, but it's also realizing the way town departments, the most informed Wakefield voter is going to know that sometimes your street's getting cut by MGLD, not DPW. So Steve and past councils and boards have, you know, compelled the two departments to work together to minimize needless cuts and conflicting infrastructure projects. So being a continued voice in the new administration, make sure the town administrator knows that history. I can be that voice because I was there for many of those discussions. My street is currently being cut by MGLD, and DPW I know is working well with them to make sure the patching goes well when they're done. So that's sort of a lesser-known issue in addition to the aggregates and the financing commitment that I spoke about earlier, but then also some of the rules around roadway use and access and timing matters, having detailed conversations outside of meetings and subcommittees with DPW to compel the citizens' need is going to be critical.
Thank you. Brian.
Thank you. A big part of the roads, it's not just the cost, but it was presented at a town meeting a couple years ago, they can only do about six miles a year. That's not a lot of road. We have a short paving season in our area. You'll see them outfilling potholes in the wintertime, and they'll come out, they'll fill them in, patch them as best they can, and then winter's not over yet, but it's to get us to the spring. And then in the spring, hopefully, they can do a better patch. If you drive on Main Street near the newer Melrose Wakefield Medical Building, that whole area in Greenwood has been dug up so many times and then patched and then dug up and patched again. At some point, we're going to have to have a more comprehensive way of paving these roads that can't just be patching or sealing. We're going to need a bigger work done on those spots.
All right, gentlemen, closing statements. We're going to start again with Brian. Two minutes.
So thank you to Bill for moderating and Brian and Ena for hosting, and to WCAT again, as well as my friends on the left of me. You have a lot of decisions to make for this election. I think this time we have three really strong candidates who love the town and want it to do well, but we all have different experiences. They have more financial. I don't really have a lot of financial experience, but I do love the town. I work well with others. I have been able to meet a lot of people through my various volunteer activities. I know the people at play, and I really want to bring common sense to the town council. Some things have come up recently where you watch meetings and scratch your head, and I'm hoping that I could be a voice of reason in those meetings or be that dissenting vote where one is needed. This is something I'm really looking forward to being able to do, and with your support on June 24th, I'll be your next town counselor. Thank you.
Sam.
Well, it's been a long hour learning about all three candidates, but before you are three community-minded individuals who have good reason to believe that they would be capable of serving as excellent town councilors. I do still continue to believe that I am the right person for the job because this work is my vocation. My upbringing emphasized the importance of community service, and as a result, I knew that the world had flaws, and I wanted to fix them. While I mainly felt helpless to do so when I was six, I can and have done things now. A deep commitment to community service has shaped my journey to this debate stage. At 23, I joined a finance committee and experienced firsthand the significant impact of local service. Inspired to further my education, I earned a master's in public policy and administration. When I moved to Wakefield, I immediately immersed myself in the community, eager to contribute to my new home. That is who I am, a dedicated individual who has built their life around learning how to serve their community effectively. I want to thank my fellow candidates for a great debate, and I'd also like to express my heartfelt gratitude to everyone who is watching live, on rebroadcast, or through YouTube. Taking the time to learn about your choice in a snap special election is what American democracy is all about. Our fates are in the hands of those who show up and take the time to do what they think is best. Finally, I would be remiss to not say, hi, Mom and Dad. And to my siblings, Charles, Philip, and Kate, and to my girlfriend, Julia, thank you for watching, and thank you, Wakefield. Your vote would mean the world to me.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll close by echoing those thanks to everyone, my opponents, Bill, Brian, and Ena, of course. WCAT, excellent job as usual, making us feel comfortable and ready to go here. As I mentioned in response to one of the questions, I've had a passion for public policy and public service since I was very young. I don't do it professionally, but I do it passionately, and this seems like an excellent opportunity both to continue my service, but also as a way to say thank you to all those people around town, the professionals in town government, the activists, the citizens who really care about how things go. Thank you for sharing your opinions with me along the way, and I hope to represent you in a manner that makes you proud throughout my term of service. I hope that the time I've spent here has demonstrated my thoughtful approach to the issues. I hope I've earned your vote on June 24th. I cannibalize much of my conclusion, as I said earlier, so I'll just skip to say, if you are like me, a parent with young kids or a younger voter who might be exiting town after school concludes next week and not going to be here June 24th, please reach out to me on how to make your vote count and how to vote absentee. Your vote should matter as well. I also envy the town councils for being able to make sort of shout-outs or recognize town participants in their closing remarks in conclusion to their meetings. So I'd like to just recognize some of the WPS and sports and activities that have really done some great things in the postseason of athletics, and also the theater troupe earned several nominations and awards at this week's METG Music Theater Awards up in Lawrence High School, which I have the honor to attend. Great work by Ms. Nup and all the performing arts contributors to our Wakefield Public Schools. That is just an example how bringing a culture of success and mutual support benefits our town, and I look to take the lessons I learned from all of you, as I said earlier, to the council. So thank you very much to all of you. I look forward to seeing you on the campaign trail.
Well, thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the candidates, anyone who puts themselves out there and, you know, wants to provide, you know, be involved in civic duty. That sounds corny, but it's really admirable. And, you know, so I would thank you guys and for participating. Our questioners, I'd like to thank. They were great questions and helped me out with the order. And as always, what I say at town meeting and I say at one of these, WCAT, we are lucky to have this organization in our town. I always say to you, when you go to another town, visit your friends, you're in a standard motel somewhere, flip on the channel and see what local cable access is like. It's not like this. And for them to be able to provide for us a debate for a special town election, it's really special and it's really worthwhile, and they do a great job here. So try and get involved, or at the very least, send a donation to WCAT. And with that, I thank you and good night, and make sure you vote next week. Make sure you vote. Okay, thank you. Good night.